Welcome, everybody to the Summit Town Hall meeting. It is October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Broadcasting here from Loma Prieta School. This is a hybrid meeting, so we have got some folks here. In the audience in the auditorium as well as online. Just going to go through a few slides here to talk about some of the different issues that particularly affect the summit area. I'll get through these pretty quick and then we can. Get to question and answer at the end. We'll have plenty of time for that. If you are in the online audience and want to participate or ask a question at the end there. Just use the raise hand feature, which is at the bottom of your screen on the, under the reactions button. And we'll call on you. That way, if you're having any trouble connecting for some reason, you can also type a message in the chat and Jamie, who is our analyst. Who managing the online portion of the meeting can read that out loud for you. So I'll just jump in here. The sheriff's substation based here on the north part of the Loma Prieta campus is underway. We allocated county budget for that in the two thousand and two to two thousand and two. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget. And the school is finalizing network expansion into the building, so it's connected to the internet. And we're just waiting on bids for roof gutters and other elements to make sure the structure is watertight, especially going into the winter here. And then they're gonna look at beginning to divide off the area for a sheriff's substation. We're also working with Santa Clara County since it is right on the border here. The goal is to have it staffed by both departments. So that we get just more, but more often having a sheriff deputy in the building to respond to constituent needs. We do have water hauling service available for anyone that is starting to feel nervous about low water in your well. We have gotten some reports still, you know, I think around a dozen only or less. Of people whose wells are running dry. Hopefully, we do get some rain here soon. But if not, or if, you know, for any reason, your, your well does go dry related to drought, we do have water hauling service available. The county also offers well soundings. Groundwater level measurements free of charge for anyone interested in checking their water levels. And if you are interested in either those services, water hauling or well sounding, you can contact our county water resources manager, Sierra Ryan. Her number is there on the screen, eight, three, one, four, five, four, three, one, three, three, or sierra dot ryan at Santa Cruz county dot U S. We are close to finalizing new rules for septic systems throughout the county. It's called the local area management plan. Or lamp for short, and these are new requirements that really the state has imposed upon us that we have to come into compliance with. Most of the area of concern in our county actually is in the San Lorenzo River Valley, which is because there's so many septic systems there. And the water cable is relatively higher. But the new requirements will affect anyone with a septic system countywide. Particularly this point of sale requirement. And the goal here is just at, at the time that a property is transferring ownership to make sure that. The buyer just understands the condition that the septic system is, is in. Whether it ultimately needs to be improved or to brought, be brought up to the new standards. And, and to make sure it's not failing. If a septic system is failing, then basically the, we would require that it be repaired within ninety days. Or the soonest that a qualified professional can be scheduled. There's still a shortage of professionals particularly that can take care of. The advanced treatment systems or install advanced treatment systems. There could also be set in some areas where water testing or alternative testing methods that would be required. We are close to finalizing this. I expect that it'll be on our October eighteenth agenda, so that's next Tuesday at the Board of Supervisors. We'll be talking about this if it, yeah, if it interests you and you want to. Provide further input, you can also do so right here tonight. We're also close to finalizing ordinance to allow tiny homes on wheels. These are stick built homes built on a chassis. So we have the second read, which is basically like the final rate of the ordinance scheduled for October eighteenth meeting. And some of the provisions include that tiny homes on wheels would be considered a, an A D U or an accessory dwelling unit. Or it could be a primary dwelling. And if you do use them as an accessory dwelling unit, that the tiny home would be allowed to be built. Prior to the primary dwelling, so that means that basically you could buy a piece of property that doesn't have anything on it. You could move in with a tiny home. While planning a larger structure. Or you could have the tiny home considered as your, your primary structure. Proposal right now is to limit just to just one tiny home per property. And a permit would be required and move in and move out and every five years. And that's because we expect people will, some property owners will just build the pad. For tiny homes and basically rent the space so the electrical hookup and the septic or sewer hookup. Out to people. And so we want to just keep track of where tiny homes are coming and going. And that way we can, we know how many are in the county at any given time and we can count them towards our housing requirements with the state. And the site preparation would be similar to that of an R V. Well, we're also in the middle of what's called the sustainability update. It'll be. One of the largest changes to the county general plan in twenty-five years. The planning commission is finished hearing it. And we expect it to come to the board at the November fifteenth meeting. And we'll probably be talking about it through the end of the year. Most of this is looking at the urban area, which you see here on the screen, Live Oak, Pleasure Point, Aptos. Those are the parts of our county that are, have urban services. And where most of the new infill growth would be focused. That's what the sustainability update is looking at is how are we going to add housing in our community in a sustainable way where people can live close to their jobs? So most of this update is focused on that area and infill density and building fifteen minute walking neighborhoods. However, there are some things that particularly affect the summit area here. Mostly some of the new uses that would be allowed in agricultural areas. And you can see on the screen there, these, these A's are agriculture zone parcels and C A, that's commercial agriculture. So you can see there are some fairly large parcels here, especially close to Summit Road. That could be impacted by this and. It's mostly we're looking at allowing more ancillary uses to agriculture, just to support the agritourism industry here. The two biggest industries in Santa Cruz County are tourism and agriculture, and we want to certainly support the confluence of those two. Including allowing more homestay or farm stays on agricultural zones, more produce stands. Making it easier for wineries or breweries to have tasting rooms or host events like weddings. And also allow more agricultural or processing facilities and farm worker housing on, in those kinds of zones. Happy to say that we've gotten some new fire cameras installed. It's just for a better early warning system throughout the county. We've got one at Silver Mountain Winery, just. Down the road over here. Thank you to Gerald. We had that camera provided a great view during the Dale of Vega fire that we had. What a month and a half ago or so now. There's also one installed at the Dream Inn in Santa Cruz. And trying to get one up at the Watsonville Airport here soon. So you can see also all these little dots. On the screen, those are all existing cameras. That's the view from this camera. It's at Silver Mountain Winery. So I'm starting to have a pretty good early warning network here in terms of fires. Also, keep your eyes and ears open for more information about a prescribed burn in the so-called demonstration forest. It'll be the first ever in the so-called demonstration forest. We are waiting until we get more rain and reach the prescribed. Moisture levels there. And I did have a chance to tour the forest where they've been preparing for this for most of the year. They've taken, they've actually reduced the ladder fuels quite a bit and done a lot of prep work so to make sure it won't get out of hand. And it'll be, like I said, a good. Learning experience and first, first prescribed burn for the so-called demonstration for us. There'll be a webinar, webinar on prescribed fire in general later this month, October twenty-fifth. Hosted by Cal Fire and more about this coming soon. So right now largely just a heads up. And finally, topic that I know a lot of you interested in talking about tonight, garbage service have. Heard a lot about concerns regarding green waste trucks and their impact on local roads. And their particular green waste refusal to accept liability for road damage that they cause. As well as the high cost of their service. A big thing that we're dealing with is state requirements, including the three bin requirement and, or been looking at opportunities for waivers on that. Of course, the other district that's most impacted by this is District Five, so I'm working closely with Bruce McPherson and his office on this issue. And really the crux of it is the green waste franchise agreement. And so we're doing a legal review of that agreement. To determine if service provided by Summit, who is here tonight and can talk more about this issue, could be considered unique to green waste and therefore. Allow them to provide service where residents. You know, are, didn't, cannot get the service they need from green waste. As well as whether residents can refuse service from green waste to specifically to avoid road damage. So that's all I have by way of presentation. I know some of you came late, so if you have questions, I'm happy to go back to any of that. But now we should have plenty of time for questions and comments. And if you do want to say something, we just ask that you come up to the podium here so that we can pick you up on this mic and that anyone listening in online can, can hear you as well. Yeah, yeah. Could, could you just come up to the podium just so that everyone else can hear you too? And since you're our first speaker, I'm just going to make sure that Jamie can hear you. Go ahead and say something.
I'd be very impressed by your slide presentation and I was wondering if you called your office, if it was possible to get a copy of your.
Oh, definitely. I'll put the slides online. If you reach out to us, we can give you contact information tonight or call. Anyway, we'll be sure to send you a link to that.
I'm a resident of Fifth District, but I, I'm. There were two or three items that you mentioned that were.
Great. Yeah, you're welcome.
Hi, my name is Sue Pierce. I've been a resident and now here for eight, forty-one years. And my primary reason for coming is about the trash service. In the forty-one years I've lived here, we always used an independent. Hauler because our house was far enough in and that was the primary purpose. Of having, being able to have somebody come up the road up to our house. And not have to be taking it out. And also, I know over many years, it's not a recent problem. But that when green waste, I think there were other trash conductors before. But when the cans are out at the road. The main road that when they, you know, the wind might blow around, they ended up getting. In the road damage and. You know, that creates problems and also it's my understanding is that once the company gave you the trash can as part of the main service. Anything that has to be replaced has to be done by. The owner, you know, own, which I, this one reason I really don't want to have to take my, have stuff go out to the main roads. Recently, I've been using the Summit Waste and recycling and. I really, just the fact that somebody can come up, get the stuff I have and. I don't have to deal with taking it out. It's one of the big issues. The other thing too is. Currently with grain waste is, you, they have those what, three cans? I'm not sure where they are with. The compost, small things. But for the most part, I'd say three fourths of the time, the can that I use for. Garbage, non-recyclable, mom and plans that want, you know, green waste types things. I usually use about a little garbage can like this and maybe, yes, so to pay for it and also have to have. And sort of going into the issue of. Being able to keep the smaller cans as long as they're labeled. I would really like to see that continue. Being given an exemption waiver, that type of allowance, which I know with any. If you call it rule, there's usually a way to recreate waivers and exemptions. I think it would be a real just waste of money, of plastic to have me have to pass three cans. Definitely one I would never have to use. So that would, that's my main. Main reason for being here is just having to consider all that. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you, Sue. Jamie, can you hear? Yeah, okay.
Sounds good.
Go ahead.
My name is Chuck Fennessey. And we've lived up here forty-three years. Two things I'd like to say. I was here about eight or nine months ago and there's Christina. By the still on New York City.
Yeah, she couldn't make it tonight, but she is definitely still on staff.
When I was here, eight or nine months ago, what I asked was if you could take a look at Highland Road from the old San Jose highway up to. Yeah, let's go past that in Spanish. Very dangerous situation.
Yep.
Well, I'm very happy to say she put me in touch with, I worked through her, she was Alex Sandoval.
Yep.
She is Public Works Director.
Uh, no, but he is working on the road project.
I gotta tell you, when I talked with him, an email, we exchanged emails, he said, I explained the situation and the deal with that, not only from the standpoint of. Holds and there's a very significant depression of those, also just in terms of, of the center line and, and you're talking with him many ago. He came out and looked at me and wrote an email back and said, yes, we're going to turn into the program. They just not quite finished with it, but they may miss. It improvements on that road. I want to thank you, Christina and Alex for that. Make sure that if you would.
I will.
Because they did the policy and everything they said they would. And which is, it was very nice for me because I kind of felt like there's one voice that can make a difference. It's simple, a whole bunch of like.
Absolutely.
Let's go to solid waste. You know, we've used this company for a long time. We're independent operators. This world is made, this country is made out of small operators. We need to find a waiver for them to continue in their business and not be harassed by a large company put out of business. Our particular road, Radnitz Road, I am. Roads have come off of that. The green waste trucks, trucks will destroy that road. We can't afford it. We maintain it ourselves. We put the money in the county, but not have to put a diamond in that road. And I'm sure there are many other roads in this mountain, mounted at the same time. So we really must find a way where some kind of exemption that they can continue in business and do the job, the excellent job that that family's been doing for years. That's my thought. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Chuck. Yeah, I'll definitely pass on the word to Alex and Christina. Just glad that we were able to do that extra portion of Highland. So that, I mean, I know Public Works always likes to do all the work they can when they're up in an area. It's, it's cheapest for everyone that way. I'm glad, glad we were able to address those portions. And I hear you completely for Summit Waste. Yeah, we have definitely want to support independent businesses and. You know, I'll keep looking at this. Really, the crux of it is the franchise agreement with Green Waste and what we've said they're allowed to do and. You know, essentially that they have the right to serve people unless they give people a waiver. And so we're really. Dissecting that franchise agreement with them now to see how we can help more people take advantage of their service, which is unique and necessary, as Sue also said. Because, you know, it doesn't make sense to have multiple bins. That's something we have to deal with the state on. But also, you know, so that heavy trucks are not driving on people's road. And I understand also, as you said, Sue, that there's not place for. The cans at different parts of the road, or it's not easy to haul them out to those locations without them getting knocked over. Who knows what.
They have three years, so. Please, if you can, nobody has the same success we have in the island way.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Thanks, Doc. Did you guys?
I'm Andrew. It's Robert Pratt. I also live on Radnitz Road and I'm here to advocate for. Summer Waste. We moved here in August of nineteen ninety-seven. And we've always had private garbage service. We never really thought about it in the beginning that there was an alternative. We got Summit Waste, before that we had Phil, and before that we had Phil Staff. So for me, really, perhaps too much personally, but I'm not really looking for a job. To haul my cans down the bottom of the road. I'd like to know if there's a prescribed vehicle for me to take them down there and back and forth. That sounds ridiculous, but really on my part, that's what it amounts to. I have gardeners, landscapers that haul that kind of waste on their own. It doesn't need to be called by somebody else. And it's all very organized and tidy the way that it is. And I also enjoy. Supporting this family and, and their service. And I'd really like to see there be an exemption for this and keep things the way they are. I don't, those big trucks, I don't even think it's a question of the common of our role. It's a question of carrying cans back and forth.
Got it. Yeah, thank you.
Hi, I'm Sharon Pratt, wife of Robert Pratt, who lives on Ren's Drive. Since you said ask you anything. I, can you explain what it, what is, why would Summit Waste be run? To lose their. What is that, a permit?
Right. Well, because the county is. Signed an agreement with Green Waste. They basically have the right of first refusal to offer garbage service. For people. And so that is. The core part of the issue, right, is that technically. Current interpretation of the agreement is that you'd have to be released by Green Waste in order to use a different trash hauler. And then the other piece to work through is whether there can be an exception for. This new state requirement of providing, you know, a separate bin for organic material. As well as, of course, recyclables and trash.
Separate those now.
I was going to say that they've always worked with us to recycle. They've been very good about it. Separated. They look at everything that they're taking out of our garbage can. You know, they do this by hand. They don't have a truck that just picks up a bin or something.
Yeah.
So they know exactly, you know, what they're getting and they do sort it, I understand. I don't know why Green Waste should have the power over them, but I guess that so be it, if that's what the county decided. Just, you know, really want to echo what others have said about they're a really important business to ours. And from what I understand, when anybody who uses Green Waste, they have to haul their cans, you know, for us it'd be a mile. To take it somewhere and then, you know, pick them up later and. You've probably seen driving up and down, you know, so-called San Jose. It's, it's a nice hole, all these, all these garbage.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emma Sanchez. I am the wife of the owner of Summit Waste and the wife of James. I do a lot of the bookkeeping and the replies to emails and. And all of that. I don't do any of the hard work, but I, I do participate. And I think there's, there's two. Two issues that we're facing to continue business in Santa Cruz, well, just to continue business. The first one is the agreement for green waste is a, they have the first right of refusal. And for the longest time. We've been doing this for five, we've been doing it for five years and then it was about sixty years before us. We were the first ones that had to have a agreement with the county. So two years prior to when we signed, they had talked to Phil Sims. And nothing moved forward with him or with him. And then when we bought it, we took over. The following year, we had a meeting in the county with Kins as well and we, we had an agreement. Right? We, we got our customer lists. We got to keep those. And that was funny. And when, and then when Kins went out of business, there was numerous. People. That needed our service. We didn't know that Kins was going out of business until everybody else did. But my phone, my email didn't stop for weeks. And so they're calling Green Waste. Green Waste is saying. We can't, we can't service you. I'm adding them to routes. We're trying to figure out what we're doing. We're spending weekends going, attending routes. That we can start on September first to help these people. And then I'm getting calls back saying, you know what? It's okay. Never mind. Green Waste said they, they've got a small truck to keep that. So this happened for probably close to six weeks. We had people needing our service, not needing our service. We had Green Waste saying that they could help and then not saying that they could help. So we were stuck in this kind of trying to figure out what we're doing. I continued at that time to send all addresses of. Customers over to the county and I just supplied them with this. And then we picked up. Probably close to about fifty new customers out of the five hundred that Kins had. And we were told by the county. That we could not service a private road. A private road with a private road association that has been in, it been in. Existence since before Green Waste's contract. And they have been told and I have received a letter that says we are not able to service them on a private road. My concern is. Who's next on the private roads? Because that is all we service.
Right.
So who's next? Radnitz Road? You know, and then, and then tons of others. Summit, I mean. Western, right? We go on one, one track. We don't make three trips or two trips. We go one, one track. We load it. They load everything by hand. And we take everything that we recycle. And now I've got, I've got a Green Waste dumpster in my house. So I can recycle what the Santa Cruz County dump won't. And that is really unfair to me. And to our business to say that we don't recycle. There was a letter that came out that says that we might not be able to recycle as much. Well, guess what? We can't recycle because your dump doesn't have it. So we forked out money, got a dumpster. We have a dumpster for green waste, dumpster for recycling that, that we cannot sort and recycle and take to the dump herself. And we have one for. Food waste. That we use, we bring it back, goes in there. They have a hydroversion that works great. But my concern is what's going to happen to the rest of these private roads? And then the second issue is the S B one create free. We're currently working with Cal Recycle.
Okay.
When I get that, that this might be bigger than just the county. But I could imagine that in the state of California, there's got to be other small businesses that, do all this today for receive the letter. They wanted to, us to give a map of our service area. So I supplied that over to Cal Recycle. What we're hoping to do with Cal Recycle is be able to use the cans we have. Or that the customers have and they either paint the top, put a color on them just to satisfy the, the, the color requirement. Like they want to work with us. And I feel like they actually want to work more with us in the county that's. She's been very helpful and she says, we will figure out a way. Now, one of the things in that, the S B one three eight three is the replacement by twenty thirty-six of all cans. And I guess I just am struggling with, oh, this is environmentally sound. We have, our customers have cans. Actually, they don't even need to use cans. Go out of the house.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's, it just, it seems silly and it's sixty thousand dollars is what, what it's going to cost us to provide cans for customers. And I don't think any of them are going to use it.
Right.
But you know, I would say eighty percent of our customers compost their own. So I'm going to get them a can, cheap little, you know, five gallon bucket. And they can use it as a accessory, but it's going to put us out of business.
Yeah.
Because I don't have seats to be there.
Yeah. Well, I'm glad to hear that Cal Recycle is working with you on, you know, the separation requirement. That's great to hear. The requirement for new cans by twenty thirty-six, I'm also, you know, at least we have a little bit of room to work with making an amendment to. The state law. to work with making an amendment to, uh, the, uh, state law before that time. Before, I've hopefully, long before you have to fork out sixty thousand dollars. I wouldn't wanna do, wouldn't want you to have to do that. I mean, as you said, I certainly, as someone who grew up in the country.
Okay, so Cal Waste one create three says something different than when we were told in our meeting. We had a meeting with, um, Casey Colosa and, um, Ken Edward.
Yeah.
And someone else, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the name. He was great as well. But they said that we have to supply cans this year.
This year.
Because we don't have customers supplying cans. So other places that have had companies supplying cans can wait till twenty thirty six to replace that. But because our not, ours are not custom, uh, uh, company provided, we are not able to fall into that. So that means that by January first, not only do I need to find about one state that can produce those cans for us and it's sixty, sixty thousand dollars.
Right.
For third, three hundred and seventy plants, times. Seems like that.
Yeah. Yes, it does.
It's five branches to ship them out here. Like, how is that good for the environment?
Right.
You know, everything that we believe that we are in Santa Cruz, that we stand for and the reason why we live here and we pay the taxes we do. Like, I, we own a home, Santa Cruz County, we pay taxes. It's because we believe in, in, in the environment and all of those things that progressiveness. And this is, this is a step backwards. This does not support local businesses, period. It doesn't support small businesses.
Yeah, I, I hear you. And sometimes the laws are written or interpreted in a way at first that don't make any sense. And so that's my job is to help make sure that what happens or what gets enforced is, is what makes most sense for uh, small business owners like yourselves and homeowners who are just trying to have, uh, you know, decent and unique service, uh, provided to them. So I'm happy to, I, I'll definitely talk with.
Out of business, there is no other.
I, I hear you. Yeah.
And I, what is monopoly?
Monopoly is when there is a sole provider of any service or good and.
So is that what we're trying to do in Santa Cruz? I'm just wondering. Cause that's what it feels like.
Right. Yeah, I don't think.
And I understand, I think it's not.
In some cases, I'm sure it is. But yeah, I mean, I, I think the, the goal with the franchise agreement originally with Green Waste was probably to incentivize them to provide a good service. Um, but I hear that they're not providing, um, an adequate service for, for some people, folks, and you're obviously. Yeah.
They don't, they're not offering twenty gallon cans to my, our customers. They're not offering thirty two gallons. They're offering sixty four. All three and a premium. They're charging probably close to seventy five or seventy eight dollars. What's?
Seventy seven dollars per can.
We charge fifty for thirty two gallon. We're actually charging thirty five dollars to service people with twenty gallon cans because they should be rewarded
Right.
for being low producers.
Yeah.
And they're not, they're being punished.
I agree. All right. Well, thank you. Uh, thank you, Emma. And I'll definitely get your contact information and I'll work with Casey, uh, Colasa and, um, the rest of the public work staff, Matt Machado, our public works director as well uh, on the interpretation of the franchise agreement. Um, and do everything I can to ensure you guys can continue to service, uh, all the customers that, you know, both currently and, um, that are now in need because of Kuntz closure, uh, as well as going forward. Of course, go ahead. It's just, I just asked you to come back up. I, I just asked you to come stand up here closer to the mic. We do have some folks online that are trying to listen in as well. You know.
I think you probably know because I believe Bruce's staff has talked to your staff. We have been working on this since the middle of July. And there are twenty three households in the Ellen Roads area. We have a middle and lower Ellen Road. It's a, it's a system of above six miles of roads, which were built by the original people who came up and moved into the area when it was off grid. So they had built those roads from scratch. Our households pay at least a quarter of a million dollars in taxes annually. We consider you guys on this side of the hill to be urban compared to where we are. And we live off of Zianti Road. And for about fifty years before, I've lived up there for almost forty, about fifty years until two thousand seventeen. Nothing has done with Zianti Road despite the fact that we were paying the taxes that we're paying and continuing to pay. Our kids, the kids on our side of the hill, go to school in Santa Clara County schools. I'd be more than happy, I would, to have my taxes voted on in Korea. One of my nieces and my daughter-in-law taught on Korea for years. My brother lives on Summit Road. So I, I know what life is like over here. But I want you to know that a, an, an association was formed in two thousand four at the request of the county, following the county's outline of how to do it. It's a formal road association to take care of our private roads. Last year, we spent fifty thousand dollars on our roads. And that was above and beyond our usual, what we all agree to pay. You can't buy a house in our neighborhood without being part of the road association. When you sign that agreement, you agree to pay so amount every year and for everything imposed on. Well, when we had the big landslide, there was, it cost us a hundred thousand dollars. It took two years to get the roads fixed. If it's three calls on the roads, we face the roads. We don't call the county. So we virtually get occasional charity service in an emergency which takes the half an hour to get to us. In two thousand seventeen, Zianti Road was paved very lightly. With, I, I was appalled when I found out what the county had paid to pave that road, which was minimal in terms of what it costs to really pave a road. And I personally have lost two titles on Zianti Road just from driving carefully and getting potholes. So in essence, it's a big gift. And I've lived in Santa Cruz. I've worked in Santa Cruz. I love Santa Cruz because it's a progressive enlightened community. I have spent my entire existence being a political activist and a very progressive political activist. And I know a good many of the, the elected officials in the county. And I'm glad to meet you because I heard good things about you. So, um, so I knew what to do when this happened. And I contacted Bruce Kniperson's office, Jenny Johnson and the staff, uh, who's been working with me and who's been wonderful. Um, we have a clause in our Ellen Road Association that you guys might wanna consider on your private road associations to do that we've all signed saying any damage to the road caused by us or any vendor is our personal individual responsibility. Last week, our road was closed for four hours because FedEx sent the wrong sized road truck up the road. The truck turned sideways, was hanging over the curb, broke off part of the road, just destroyed part of a, a burn. And we filed a claim that the person who had ordered the furniture filed a claim. FedEx said fine, they're processing it right now. They've agreed to pay for the road. When you sign up for Green Waste, you sign a waiver holding them harmless for any damage to your property or to the road. In the meantime, for every trip that they make on a county road, they're paying a certain amount of money per trip, per truck to the county for road maintenance. For any of us living on private roads, we're not getting anything. Plus, we're saying, screw you if we were, if we mess up your road. Now, they did get a small truck that drives three times a week instead of once. And they're, they've spent, I, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm glad you had a really great time without some public work. Because we even had a Zoom call with Matt Machado, the head of Public Works, the head of the whole division with three other Public Works employees, plus the general manager of Green Waste. And I have never in my life felt as much misogyny and as much disdain as I did. I know the county council has looked at the contract and I can tell you that we are hiring our own contract attorney and to, to look at it also and probably it would, uh, uh, and we made, um, this has been like my whole life since the middle of July. And thank God I retired. But it's, it seems totally antithetical to everything I believe and love about Santa Cruz. And I have to tell you, I'm brokenhearted. And I know that Jenny really hears where I'm coming from and has been helpful. I also believe that there are gray areas in the contract. I have read every word in the three hundred and eighty seven page contract. And I have talked to several attorneys who live on our road who are not contract attorneys. And we're in agreement. There are, there are areas. And I believe that the board of supervisors believes this. When you develop an ordinance, you leave enough wiggle room. Because the way the county is set up, and I just discovered this after thirty five years of, of working with the county, we're not, we are disenfranchised. Because no matter what we tell Supervisor Cunningham, am I pronouncing your name correctly? Supervisor Cunningham and Supervisor Kniperson and Supervisor Kennedy and whoever we talk to. And no matter what the organization card says with electorate and then the board of supervisors and then the C A, C A O, once there is, once it goes to the C A O, you guys effectively can't do anything.
Well, that's.
And I have, I have requested, I mean, we're, we're out of the loop. We can complain to you. But right now, what the answer stands to me is that, okay, we'll do something in five years when the contract is renewed. And I'll be dead in five years.
Sure.
So, I mean, this is, I feel really heartbroken about being disenfranchised.
You're not disenfranchised. We can do something. I mean, the majority of the board can certainly direct the C A O. We could even direct them to reopen the contract.
But I think you can even have an amendment, what I would love to see, which would solve all of these problems and save tons of time and keep a small, a darling, small business doing with, you know, being able to succeed in our county is to get a waiver for private roads.
Yeah.
Because Green Waste isn't gonna ever pay for any damage that they cause to the private roads, no matter how small it looks. And they're not gonna go up to people's houses who are in their eighties, who can't get their garbage down at the bottom of the driveway, much less the bottom of the road. So thank you very much for letting me grant. It's been, it's been building up for a long time and poor Jenny's had to hear it a lot.
Yeah.
But I have an entire binder full of all the data that all of you need. So if you wanna join us, you're more than welcome to join us.
Yeah, well, thank you for, for coming tonight and sharing your side of things with me. And, you know, thank you for your many years of progressive activism. And, you know, the irony here is, of course, the, you know, the issue that affects you most is just your, your trash service and, uh, the, the maniacal way that the county has dealt with this, uh, up till now. Um, I've certainly hear all of you and, uh, you know, and I spoke with Jenny this morning as well about this. Um, you know, I appreciate all the work you've done with your road association and I understand you guys pay quite a bit every year, uh, to keep your road in great, great shape. So, yeah, I mean, I'll call the president of Green Waste myself and just say, look, these, these people deserve a waiver. Um, and it's gonna be a lot more trouble than it's worth for you if you don't just provide that. So let's just get to the end of it. Yeah. I, I'm, I'm sorry about, uh, your treatment there. Before we come back to you, sir, we do have someone online, Dana Junker. Are you there and, um, ready to, to speak?
Uh, yeah. We're here. Um, uh, you know, I wanted to bring up a, another issue that I've actually talked to your office a few times about and that was the, um, uh, additional parcel tax that's going to be, uh, applied to everybody's parcels uh, for the, uh, development of the new transfer station.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And, um, you had sent out, um, a notice of the meeting on, uh, for the meeting was happening June the seventh. You sent out a notice on June the sixth about the meeting. But there was no mention about the option to protest. And when I, so I sat and I watched that meeting and I think there was what, like two or three people that protested that?
Yeah, that's about it.
I mean, statistically speaking, that's just does not make sense that only two or three people would protest an increase in, in property taxes of a hundred and ten dollars and then in five years going up to one seventy five. And then at that, at five year point, be re, reevaluated for a higher property tax for the next five years. And so this is gonna go on for the next twenty years of raising our property taxes to fund this transfer station. And, you know, you, you went ahead and voted for that, for the, for the property tax increase. And I just feel like we all got snowballed on this and, and I haven't spoken to one person that's received that notification that was supposedly sent out by Public Works. And when I called Public Works, I'm gonna have to agree with the previous speaker about how I was treated. Um, just pretty much with disdain for even questioning whether or not these, these notifications that have actually gone out.
Well, I do know they went out. I mean, I, at least I received one myself at my home address. Uh, I looked at it before it went out, uh, to make sure that it was clearly labeled that, um, an increase was being contemplated. Um, you know, I mean, the challenge here, Dana, was, was largely that, I, I mean, you mentioned that I voted for it. I, I did. Um, because, you know, the, for, for those of you who are not familiar with this, you, it, this issue, the background is that, uh, Buena Vista landfill, which is the last landfill open in our county, um, is approaching capacity. We estimate seven to eight years left. And so ultimately, we're going to need a solution when that happens. Um, and so the proposed solution has been to create a transfer station so that waste can be, uh, taken down to the Marina landfill, which has, I think, more like another additional fifty years. Um, and then also to build an organic waste composting facility at, uh, Buena Vista so that we can take care of, uh, organics at, at that site. You know, if we don't invest in those facilities, uh, ultimately, we'll, I just end up costing taxpayers like you more in the long run. Um, so I, I don't know what else I can do at this point. Um, you know, again, the, the notice did go out. Um, you know, we can provide you the receipt for the postage. Uh, I'm sure that people did throw it.
Cause after my phone call, I don't trust a darn thing that Public Works does.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'll see if we can track that down and share it with you. I mean, ultimately though, um, you know, I suppose, uh, majority of the board could choose to reopen this. Um, I don't know that, that we would though, just because I mean, there's not a great alternative um, to creating these new facilities and having a long-term plan, uh, for waste management in our county.
I, I understand that, but you know, I, does anybody in that room that's there with you understand that their property taxes uh, along with their, you know, garbage bill that they're normally gonna have, they're gonna have an additional property tax due for their garbage and a special assessment?
I'm, I'm seeing some, some heads nodding. So people are.
For the next twenty years?
Yeah, they, they, they're not, uh, excited about it, but, um, they understand the necessity. Sir, if you, you wanted to come up and share some thoughts, if you don't mind, uh, Dana, we've got the.
I think it would be, but three years ago, they took away the platform recycling. And when they took that away, we asked the county, they put a dumpster for Green Waste that they have to build to provide that for the, for the public. And right now, all that's going to land, except that, you know, we, we actually provide that now. It wouldn't, you know, maybe a little cheaper to provide that, but it's scandalous to land bill rather than shorting it. They took it away, but then there, there are good options. Uh, and there's another way to provide service for them. Uh, and there's, there's another way to provide service for them. So, I mean, that's kinda huge.
So, sorry, I said, to make sure I understand you, so there was an additional dumpster that was, look at.
They have to use recycled paper and plastic, they don't do it.
I see.
They, they switched the contract from, um, women's, uh,
Grey Bears.
to Grey Bears.
Grey Bears are great, but they took it away, they didn't give another option.
So you're saying we're, we're recycling paper and plastic at Grey Bears, but not at Buena Vista? And therefore that's just adding more to the dump in that location? Uh huh.
That also, that's a lot quicker.
Yeah, absolutely.
You bring in a flatbed of probably two, three tons of paper, plastic, and then I was sold out of paper. Cause there's only like the garbage.
I see.
And I mean, that's not really helping the problem here.
Definitely. Well, yeah, I'll, I'll look into that. I mean, my understanding was that Grey Bear is also was accepting those materials at the landfill.
Yeah.
But, okay.
No, that's the problem with the county, but this, they're not aware of what's going on.
Mm hmm.
Like I spent, I think it was going on, probably looking at any type of road to, to see if I could even service that place where I live.
Mm hmm.
And I tried to stay on top of what's being recycled, stopping the cycle. And that's why we went to the Green Waste to offer things we can't do at that.
Mm hmm.
And I would think the county would try to do the same with it. I've asked, didn't happen. I mean, I think it would be great if they did it.
We should absolutely be recycling paper and plastic at the landfill. So thank you for bringing that to my attention. Yeah, thank you, James. Okay, uh, don't see any other questions or comments in the chat? Just Jamie, is there anything that I've missed?
Uh, Joni had her hand up previously. I'm not sure, Joni, if you still have a question, you can feel free to unmute. And other than that, I do not have anything.
Okay, well, then I'll bring the meeting to a close. Um, well, and, and we'll end the recording. Um, yeah, I'll definitely, with James and Emma, take your contact information and so that we can, uh, move this forward with Public Works and see if we can find, uh, some resolution with Green Waste and, and Public Works. Thank you everyone for coming out tonight. Uh, and well, our next meeting will be, uh, in about a month. And, um, we'll see you then. Thank you.